Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We've got a lot of discussion items for the next however and a half. The first one is the American Rescue Plan Act and what do you guys?
So this back in when was June? You know, the previous council had discussed the possible uses of the American Rescue Plan. The city was awarded a total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And so half of that money, two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand, sorry, needs to be. Needs to be the first disbursement amount and is. At the end of this year. So what you have before you is a list of recommendations. I reordered in that top memo, I reordered with the priorities from administration. The first being the generator repair, or not even a repair, the upgrade, the generator. The city's portion of the match for the locks, the new locking, door locking system. As well as the repairs and upgrades needed for the elevator. So certainly you can feel free to choose other items from that list or identify something else that may be appropriate, but those would be our recommendations. And we've included quotes for each of those items in there with the exception of the door locking system. That is, has already been decided through the grant the city was awarded through Oakmont County.
So we'd already got a grant for the lockings for most of the lockings.
Correct, for approximately ten thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, and so that's why it had a separate action item associated with it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And and these, on the page four, those were the list of things that that the previous council came up with that were allowable suspense expenses under under ARP, right?
That is correct. The items in bold are are the priorities. Some of them were, actually, most of them were already mixed into that original list. I just pulled them to the top for you.
Yeah.
So.
Was there, was there any resident input in any of these ideas? Not that I know of. I didn't think so, but you know why?
City just looking through our administration, evaluating what our needs are administratively for the building.
And that's what the money can only be spent on that?
There's some very specific parameters for what these funds can be used for. So again, this was built back in May, June.
Okay, can we get the parameters for the next, when the next disbursement is going to be coming?
Certainly provide you some additional information. I believe it was provided in previous packets of the bulk, like.
Previous packets to new, to new council members, previous packets to new council members?
Previous packets to the council before you, which are all accessible online, so.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll look online, that's good, thank you.
I had a question about the storm sewer system video.
Yes.
So it's four hundred thousand dollars, right, is it approximately? So would you be paying that in? Would you be able to pay that for this portion and then the next, the next go around for ARP? Or would that be just straight up?
Well, so right now, the cammering of the sewer system, the engineer has estimated it to be just over four hundred thousand dollars total. We submitted and were awarded a two hundred thousand dollar Michigan enhancement grant to cover half of that cost. So so we're having this on there, call it, cover the balance.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, it won't cover the balance, the balance of the first. So because if we do, if we do the generator, the lock system and the elevators, although I did notice for the elevator, there were two, there were two proposals in it, I was a little confused by that.
Yes, there are two different proposals.
Right, okay, yeah, and so if you just look, for purposes of the discussion, I took the higher cost one. So it's a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, so the remaining fifty-four thousand we put towards the, of its first payment, we would put towards the sewers.
Yes, that's one act. I mean, there's plenty of ways to kind of divvy this up.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so in other words, when you said the balance, you meant the balance of the money that we're getting, not the balance of the.
Correct, correct, sorry.
So. The elevator, did you have a recommendation? So I see you have two, the anyone, so who, I guess, spoke with the the elevator companies?
It was the Ronnie Spiden, the director of building facilities, he obtained both of these elevator, elevator solos. Adler Electric is who currently services our elevator now.
Okay.
What do you have to say? What's wrong with the elevator?
They have said that the door, the door operator, the door clutch, the door closer, they out with their light, their useful light. And we're having problems with the doors staying open or staying closed on the elevator. So it's something that has to be, will have to be fixed because if something gets on the elevator and gets stuck on it. Because the doors don't open, but they said that the doors had, or the mechanisms for the doors had used their out, their out useful life, so.
And when was this notified, or when was the notice?
On ten twelve of twenty twenty-one, we just got the notice from Kone when they were out here to inspect. They do a monthly inspection, they have to through the state of Michigan, they have to do a monthly inspection, so we were notified after the inspection.
And they're called to repair the problem and do that, some of the modified system.
I don't even know how old it, well, how old's the building, so that elevator is that old, so I don't know, you know, it would give us a lot, quite a lot.
And if anyone's compared, as Ronnie compared the two quotes that we had to determine which, which one, that's sort of the idea here, that we'll approve the overall spend and then you know, you guys will evaluate and choose the appropriate vendor and the balance of the work, so.
You know, I don't know if Mr. Sweeten has evaluated either, you know, compared these, I think really just authorizing the expenditure. We asked him to get us a couple of quotes, while when we got the first one from Kone here for twenty-three nine, we asked him to give a bit, two more quotes for it, and I think he only got one, and then we get the third one, you know. And part of the reason this is important to get the elevator fixed is because our ADA accessible bathrooms are down in the basement. So we need to be able to have anyone who needs to have access.
All right, so let's move on to the interim city administrator agreements.
Just sit right here, just at the back of my, my phone computer. Um, so I mean, what you have before you is what myself, Pam, and Chief McKee have proposed for in terms of our agreements for the interim city management position. We've discussed how we intend to split the duties. I mean, they will fall along the lines of our current specialties, if you will, can handle finance and budget. HR being serving as the primary point person. Chief continuing, obviously, with release and fire, the emergency management services, working on IT and some other resident communication and outreach. And then I will also be doing all the community development, planning, zoning, infrastructure products, general communications and whatnot, so.
One question I have, so all three of the contracts were identical, so is the assumption that the, you know, taking over, you know, share all responsibilities is pretty much an even split between the three of you? Or is it, you know, one person being more than the other, or you think it's gonna be the way you get or break your dogs pretty much?
Yeah, we envision it being even split, very much a team effort. Pam?
So everything goes through Pam, emails, and then you disseminate, correct?
Correct.
I have a question, nothing personal. I asked for the information privately and didn't get it, so I just, I know Pam and Scott, I know that I've been here and all the things that you've done. I'm not familiar with your, you know, how your skills and qualifications fit the city administrative position. So I don't know if that's something that you can share, as I said, I did ask for it privately, didn't get anything. So before I can vote, you know, would I give a vote?
Sure, I've been doing community and economic development for the last fifteen years. I worked for, I started off working for a nonprofit that served the thirteen communities, three counties and I'm not along eight mile row. Both of the communities, Intramont and the city of Placent, similar in size. I did very similar work in terms of the community and economic development aspect. As well as managing the planning and zoning commissions and boards for each of those communities. The business development related activities are also something that I did and was highly involved in for the city of Placent, obviously, as well as here. The, for the past year, I have been very involved with all of the infrastructure projects. You know, really working hand in hand with the infrastructure committee on a daily basis with the city's engineering consultants. In feeling the majority of resident comments, concerns, addressing their needs and services. So this is, binds up well with everything that I have done in the past.
Is it, and I, I guess I'm a little unclear on what's going to be different for you, you know, than what you're, what you've been doing? What's going to be different as far as, you know, what added responsibilities will you have?
I'm taking the pride, I will now be the primary lead for all of those infrastructure related projects.
Okay.
No, I've been working, I mean, obviously, involved, but the previous city administrator took the lead on those items. Taking again, the lead on the communication aspects. You know, that's the e-newsletter, the Your Towns, like all the letters that come out. Council package, I mean, I did the entire council packet, you know, I was doing assistance from Pam and Scott, but, you know, really taking the lead on those items, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No question. So is this forty-eight thousand or whatever, what's this number here?
It's forty thousand annual, so it's.
In addition to their, their salaries now?
So it's not forty, so the thought is, you know, the, the city administrator, the process is typically four to six months. So for, so on a pro-rated basis, you know, let's say it's six months, it basically works out to about a thousand dollars.
This is a six-month agreement?
It's.
It's an agreement until you invite your city administrator.
And how, how did we come up with this particular amount?
The startup proposal.
And can you elaborate, or how particular, how this specific amount you came up with?
Well, the additional work we're gonna be doing, the difference, like with me, I'm gonna be doing additional meetings that I've no, I didn't do before. I don't get any overtime for putting in extra hours. I'm gonna be doing the budget all by myself, there's just gonna be additional time, and I'm gonna be here a lot more hours than I have in the past, so.
Correct, I never, I never handled IT stuff for the city, so that's, that's where it's gonna be a learning curve for me. You know, Cheryl had gotten ball rolling with the new phone system, obviously, the door lock system, I'm now, you know, handling this. There's things here that we've never done before, so it's gonna take us a lot more time than what we normally do. Figured Cheryl was working about eighty hours a week, right, and so that's basically giving you guys all of the additional, you know, not like thirty, but twenty-six.
And I have been putting in a lot of time too, I'm gonna have to put additional time now.
Does that, is that kind of equivalent to Cheryl's salary in the past? You break it up, or if you add it up, between the three, is that, or is that going a bit over her annual salary?
It would be a middle, oh, sorry. Anything else? Thank you guys for doing a fine job, yeah. All right, so item C is the city council meeting dates and city holidays.
So. Do you think that's closing? Um, so included in your packet are the proposed meeting dates for twenty twenty-two, including your study session dates and your regular meeting dates. The only two items that will need to, that you'll need to decide on how you would like to treat are the Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is the second day in October. So in twenty twenty-two, that'll be October tenth, and then Juneteenth, which is the nineteenth of June. Previously, council had asked what surrounding communities are, are doing, operate those two holidays. Southfield is celebrating both of those holidays and they will be closed to the public, as will Oak Park. Beverly Hills is open for Indigenous Peoples', and they're still discussing Juneteenth. And Berkeley will only be recognizing those how solutions, so that is the action. The action really is to determine how you wanna treat those two holidays and then adopt your meeting calendar. And Pam and I went through these to make sure there's no additional conflicts with holidays.
So, any questions on that, any thoughts? Yeah, those are ours.
Guess it might be a little off topic, what are the plans for the closed office at lunchtime?
Right now, at least through the end of the year, we're gonna have to remain closed from at least from twelve-thirty to one-thirty. We just do not have the staffing capacity to have two people downstairs covering the counter at the same time. Right now, actually, we've only had three people in the office, so this last, last Wednesday, Friday, and then today, we only had three people down there. So we are proposing that we're gonna look at it in, in January, once we get full staff back. We're hoping that we're gonna be able to test.
And why are there only three people?
Vacations, personal days, we let these up the personal days before the end of the year, people are on vacation because of holidays. Staffing, and this is also a big busy time for us with tax collections. Any other questions regarding meeting dates or their holidays?
I don't have any questions, so I do think these are two great holidays that we should be in favor of, so.
Very good, other special, let's move on to staffing. Scott and I are gonna take this on as a team effort here. Scott's been in touch with the three companies that were chosen for the city manager. For us to do the city manager search, and he has got some information about those three companies, if he wants to take that over.
So really, I only spoke with two so far, spoke with GovHR of Northbrook, Illinois. They're preparing a packet to send us, they will send us a complete packet of an overall search, also with step-down increments, depending on what city council wants to choose. They indicated their rough overall costs for their complete package is twenty-two thousand five hundred. I also spoke with a representative from Baker Tilly, Texas, their overall complete package is twenty-four thousand five hundred, and they are preparing a packet as well with step-down pricing.
And on the MML, we haven't talked to anybody, we did get some information from them, but the last time we used MML, we, we were about fifteen thousand dollars of the max that we paid out for them for doing the search.
As I remember, there were two different options last time.
Correct. Right, but I looked at, I looked it up today about how much and it was it was just about ten thousand, but I, I didn't know if there was additional costs and I didn't pick up.
For people that are watching, these are, people were asking to submit proposals, not people that were necessarily using, so.
Correct.
That's correct.
And then we are also looking for a city clerk, we would like to start putting that out there. We'd like to go to the municipal clerks association and put it out on their website. We would also like to put it out on the MML website for clerks. That tally will be retiring, or will be resigning from the city as of February fourteenth. So we would like to start getting somebody in because we do need a clerk for signatures and things like that. And since she is not in the office, it is very hard for us to get signatures, so we'd like to do that. We're also, we will be losing our DDA and special projects manager, she will be resigning as of January fourteenth. And so that's another position we're gonna have open in here. We also have our parks and rec coordinator position open, so we are very short-staffed right now. We also have our deputy treasurer position as an open yet, is still open yet. And so we're, we're without a lot of people. And so like with the lunch hours, things like that, it's very hard for us to have two people in the office at all times, which we would like to have because of money reasons, safety, things like that, so. But these are things that we would like to have you guys look at and give us direction on, you know, the city administrator position, so we can get the ball rolling on that if, or if you want more information, we can get that for you. But like the city clerk and that, we do have job descriptions, you do have a job description on your desk. We would like to start getting that one rolling as soon as possible.
Do you think you'll be able to have the, you know, all the proposals in house by our, your third spending session?
For the city manager?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's how during the holidays, so, so the third is right after the holidays, so that would probably, you could call a special meeting on the third if you wanted to.
Is there a possibility of doing any kind of temp help or anything like that? So, you know, we do have some idea about our city administrator and, you know, it's hard for a new person to come in and have, not have any say in, you know, some of the people that they're working with. You know, I, I never know, I know there's pros and cons to both ways.
Right, we had a temporary in here when the front counter person left, we brought in a temporary, and we were hoping to get somebody with more experience than what we got. It's very hard to bring somebody in, and then you have to, especially like if you're doing money, things like that, you gotta do background. You also have to make sure we're doing, you know, our due diligence, plus then the training of these new people because they don't know how a city runs, they don't know what the operations of our day-to-day are. So it makes it very hard to do that, unless you can find somebody that's already had some municipal experience, or. I don't know if it's on the agenda for today, but if it's not, then we would probably would like to have added that we can go out and search for city clerk, yeah. If it's not on there, we would like to add it right now. I don't think it is either, so we would like to have that, then. The other two, the other positions will have to come back probably on June third, and once we know more about what we're actually needing in that part, so.
And so what positions are those?
The DDA special projects manager and a parks and rec coordinator. And because parks and rec coordinator were really kind of swaying towards a part-time person for that position. We really don't think that that needs a full-time position because it used to be part-time before, and then it became full-time, so we're kind of, but we wanna look into that a little bit more. And so that, but right now, with being down all these positions, there, we're, that's why we're doing different things, because I'm still working, the deputy treasurer, doing some of that work. And there's different things that, you know, we gotta have segregation duties, we don't have that, so.
Would that be something to look at too, or to count for?
If we, yeah, if we could get something with health experience.
Is that more important than DDA and DDA and special projects manager or parks and rec coordinator?
Probably parks and rec, it would be more important, but the DDA special projects person is the person that does the communications, they do our newsletters, they do a lot of different things too. So they do all the community events, they run, they help run, maybe a board of directors meeting, all of those committee meetings. And they have been helping with parks and rec, you know, they have been helping with our parks and rec programs.
Well, we're right, because we haven't had any, but our charter does say that we are supposed to have a perks creation department, so. You know, know that we've been doing.
Did you say a department or a person?
Oh, so department doesn't.
I'm since the, would you say? Or did you have?
I said recreation department, there really isn't a department.
You still have department, yeah, that's the party that Corey was taking care of, so that it was never, we have that.
I know, but I saw there were things that were being out, gonna be outsourced to Southfield and whatever, and I.
Well, that was in talks, we haven't done anything to that yet, but we were. Well, that was in talks. We haven't done anything with that yet, but we were.
Okay, can, can we please include residents in these discussions about what we're going to do in the future? Because this is the.
And then one, one thing that was quoted, and I don't know if it's in any. The events until we get a recreation coordinator. So we investigated that any further.
We have not had time to do that because we're just going to talk about that too. So.
Volunteers to do stuff that especially. In immunity parks and rec is a deal, it's important, communal. You know, the change and aid impact to people that live here every day. So, you know, as a real terror parks and rec department was a, was a real positive for people coming to our community. And so, you know, I, and, but maybe there are residents that could care less, and maybe that's the majority. I don't know. I just think it's a pretty important, pretty important decision and discussion that should include the people that it impacts. That's all.
Anything else?
If I could just make one comment, I think it's something that interim administrators should consider is the, is the appointment of an interim clerk, just because it is a position that you need a clerk in the building. And I don't know if you've had discussions with, called it if it's something she would be interested in doing. But, you know, that, that's a recommendation that the administrator, the interim administrators can make to council for approval. I do think it's something important that we do sooner rather than later. Again, just because, you know, having a clerk in the building, someone that can sign notices, resolutions, things of that nature, in which, for that being on medical leave, it's really not possible for her to continue to do that. So. And, you know, there's, I do believe the MML has a list of interim clerks, treasurers, things of that nature that, that could also be looked into to see if some, if there is an individual that would be interested in that position on an interim basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess the one, the one question Scott would be, I mean, if we're going to approve posting this position, you know, immediately, if we're going to prove that later on tonight. I mean, if there really a, an opportunity to get somebody in here for, you know, hopefully a very short period of time that it's going to take to hire that person. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm throwing that out there as a question.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I don't know how long it's going to take, you know, by the time it's posted and it's open. You, you might be looking at thirty to sixty days before a candidate is selected and presented to council for confirmation. So, you know, again, that's a big window of time to not have a clerk in the building.
Just after the.
And likewise, too, with respect to the other positions, maybe interim would be a good way to go just because, you know, hiring a new administrator, they may want to bring in their own people. They may want to, I think someone made that comment earlier, may not want to be handcuffed with, you know, who just filled a bunch of positions. And then ultimately, the, the organization of the day-to-day operations is responsible for the administrator. So there may be a reorganization of, of staff and duty.
American power update.
The American tower update, I think we're going to hold off on this because we are trying to get some information. Bruce has been kind of working on this with Wayne State to get some more information. When Ian was on council, Ian had brought a. Good thing because they want to buy out our tower from us right now. They have some lease monthly, and they want to buy the tower out and give us a certain amount of some money for fifty years, I think, or some. So, and when Ian was talking, he said that technology is going to take off and he may not be able to. So what we've talked about and Bruce has been helping with it. He's been very diligent about helping us with this, that we'd like to get somebody from Wayne State that knows technology, knows what might happen in the future to these towers. Are they going to be, you know, are they going to be worth something later down the road? Or are they going to be obsolete and we're going to be doing something else? So we have been in talks with these, some people from Wayne State at great roots.
Trying, trying to get them for the January third meeting, waiting your back.
Yep, to come in and speak with the council.
Have you let the American power have extended the?
It was extended it, but I will, after tonight, I will call them again. I want to make sure that this is the week you want us to do it by extending it again, so I can call them.
Yeah, and the, the one thing that was interesting, just in the discussions that I had with them is, and, and I don't, I'm probably putting words in their mouth just from what they were saying. It sounds to me like those are actually the five G, they'll actually be less valuable because five G requires, requires more frequent, smaller apparatus than, than the existing four G L T, which required a huge tower. So that was kind of an interesting point. So which would make, you know, which might make us lean towards action too, which is, hey, we're going to use the money now before they're obsolete. But again, they'll, they'll talk to us about that.
One of the, the new technology, when do they co-locate on the tower?
It was a very basic conversation.
Any other questions or discussion regarding the power?
Ethics training ordinance and training.
I think Scott's going to take that one.
Yeah, so this is something that's come up in part based on last week's training with the parliamentarian as, as well as with, just to some ongoing discussion that we've had with the prior council and administrator as far as implementing a. An ethics order for lack of a better term. There's a good publication that's included in your package from the MML. It kind of goes into further detail about what, what an ethics order truly is and what it means and what it encompasses more than just what you think of upon, you know, what you initially think of when, when the word ethics comes up. Included in your package is one, a sample one that my office did for the Village of Wolverine Lake. And again, this is just kind of a starting point for discussion among council members, just to see if there's an interest in doing this. If so, how, how you'd want to go about creating one and, and what you would like to see in it. There's certain things you would or you wouldn't want to see included in that. The publication from the MML does, does reference creation of a subcommittee or a study committee where you can get staff input, resident input, council input, professional consultant input. Really, that's why this is on the agenda this evening is to have some discussion about that and then to get some direction for moving forward on it.
I was really happy to see the MML handbook on page sixty-one, where it talks about Robert's rules of order are complicated, highly detailed, and are intended primarily for large legislative bodies or for meetings of large associations whose membership may number hundreds. Its procedures may be unnecessarily cumbersome for small governing bodies, the five to seven member councils of most Michigan municipalities. It just talks about some of the, some of the differences. And it says, "The complex details of parliamentary procedure may also confuse and frustrate elected officials and the public, particularly if the rules are seen as being manipulated for or against one side of an issue or the other, or as seen as being ignored, misunderstood, or wrongly invoked. Such a use of the rules of procedure or the perception of their misuse will counter the very purpose of rules of procedure to protect the minority and promote orderly deliberations and decisions and will further undermine public confidence in government." So this is kind of the opposite of what we had at the parliamentary procedure meeting, which I found somewhat disturbing and cutting down on transparency and interaction with residents and the importance of residents. So, like I said, I, you know, this, this is much more the model that I was used to as a, as a school board member, being involved with the community, working together as a team, sharing information so that everybody is on the same page, so that when we're making important decisions, we are, all have the same information and, you know, we know, know where we're going. The presentation I thought was, I don't know, creates a kind of exclusionary process. As a new council member, it's been, you know, difficult to get information, get documents, whatever, so that I can make decisions, so that I know what's going on. So anyway, I, I appreciated this, this perspective from MML. And as I said, that's, that's more what I'm used to. So when, you know, sometimes it may appear that I don't know what the rules are about open meetings apps and all of those kinds of things. I do, I was an elected official for fourteen years, so I am familiar with these things. And this is the model that I'm used to working with.
So it is, I mean, in what, at least of last week's reading, I mean, we, we have a very loose application of Robert's rule of order in terms of the structure of our meetings. And I think that could, that is pretty consistent across the board when it comes to local government and even higher up. Certainly not, you know, the volume of, of information that's contained in Robert's rule. There's no, there's, it would be impossible to apply it to, to the city council at this level. But it, but it is, it is something that, you know, our policies and procedures, as Coco indicated, are from nineteen eighty-five. You know, we talked about two years ago about updating and revising those. And it's something that unfortunately we just haven't really dove into. And so that's why, again, bringing this up again, to feel that it's important to, to discuss this and to put something in place that just, it has a clearer picture for everyone, what, what the expectations are, how things will work. And then, yes, possibly clear up some of those, those confusions, those things that might lead residents to question transparency in the local government. Again, I put this on here for discussion and, and like to get some feedback so that we could, you know, potentially move forward.
So the way the meeting was run on December sixth, that was loosely following Robert's rules?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a, it. I mean, we're having a discussion back and forth here under Robert's rule of order. That would, you know, we would both be speaking through the chair of the board.
But, yeah, but this is a study session. This isn't a regular meeting. It's not.
The same rules of order apply to whether it's a study session or a council meeting. I mean, the difference again between a study session and a council meeting is that there's no votes taken at a study session. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I mentioned this to you, Barbara, you, Jalen, in one of our discussions. I mean, that, I mean, really, the, the whole piece that we really use is there's a motion, there's a second, there's a discussion, there's a vote. I mean, that's, that's really always the, I mean, the, the major gist of how Robert's rule affects our deliberations.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, we're, nobody's, you know, making a motion to call, you know, points of order, points of interest. I mean, it's not to, those aspects that are not utilized. So that's when I say loosely applied, that's what I mean.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, and I think we should report on it. I'm not exactly sure how, how we do report on it, whether it's, you know, get a committee or the, you know, you get, you were, you're often taking the first draft in it or.
Yeah, like I said, I, I did include obviously that what we did for Wolverine Lake is a little bit different. That's a village versus a city. So, but I just wanted to give you just something. I mean, and in this, in this article from MML, they do identify a number of other communities that have them. So again, if it's something that council wanted to make a, a subcommittee and appoint to a staff member, I mean, they'd be happy to be a part of it, probably should be a part of it, a council member or two. And then if there was a resident or two that wanted to be on it. I think that that, that would be one way to go about it. Or you could just directly prepare something it, and council could review it and change it if necessary. So whatever, whatever the, the pleasure of the pod is.
I like the idea of you drafting something and then for us to review it.
Yeah, consistently.
I have a question. I, and I mean, I missed this. Was this precipitated by the current situation or is this something that you had been looked at in the past?
No, we, I mean, we've talked about it in the past in updating the rules of procedure. I definitely feel that it's important. There's been a lot of back and forth in dialogue on which policies are we adhering to. You know, what are, what, what are the repercussions for this or that? So I think wanting to have it clearly defined and laid out so that all council members are on the same page when it comes to policies, procedures, and obligations, and as their role. And again, not just counseling, this, these standards would apply to appointed numbers of bodies. I mean, there's been lots of discussion about transparency in subcommittees and roles and responsibilities of individuals that are on subcommittee. So what I am envisioning is an ordinance that would encompass all of that, planning commissioners, and even be applicable to staff, what, what those standards are.
Any other discussions?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to draft this because I don't think it's clear on what, I don't know when our charter is followed, when it isn't, what, you know, what, what rule we follow, what law we follow in this situation, that situation. That's, I haven't seen a clear path. So I don't, I don't know as far as developing, you know, a plan and a, a policy.
Part of it is because our charter is lacking.
Yeah, I mean, so you, you keep referencing not following the charter, and I can only assume you're referring to the, the organizational meeting after the election.
It's, and swearing in and taking office and, you know, all those pieces. There were some consequences from.
And over and over.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said, you keep bringing that up over and over again, and that's what you're referring to. And, and we have explained to you previously that for the last fifteen years, they've never had a meeting on that day. And we, and the mayor has said that moving forward, we will follow that provision. So is there any other part of the charter that you feel that is not being adhered to? Or can we move on past that?
I don't, I don't know that move on past, past that.
The mayor has already said going forward, we will, we will set aside past practice and we will adhere to the charter. So if, if you continually refer to the charter and our lack of following it, I would like for you to specify what areas of the charter were not followed. That, that issue has been resolved. So I'm asking if we can move on from that, or do we have to bring that up at every meeting?
Oh, I didn't realize that, you know. My, my questions still have not been answered. I had a lot of questions about what the process looks like and whatever. So as far as moving forward on it, I, you know, I haven't gotten the information that I've requested, so.
What information are you lacking with respect to?
Just what the press, what, what did the process look like? What, you know, as a new council member, as a resident, as whatever. I mean, it was, it was disturbing. And then the lack of even thinking that it's anything important or whatever is even more disturbing. So, you know, that's my piece. And when, and when the city attorney is saying, we haven't done it that way for fifteen years. And, you know, sometimes we enforce the charter, sometimes we don't. You know, as far as the, the, the legal pieces, I took an oath on November twenty-second that I would uphold the constitution of the state, of the United States Constitution of the state and the Charter of Lathir Village. So, you know, if I'm not following the charter, I'm breaking the oath that I took, you know, just a month ago. So, you know, I'm just saying it's, it's difficult. If there are procedures and practices that are, are across the board, there's not a level playing field for people. And, you know, to just have it blown off and, okay, you know, yeah, draft a proposal for us. You know, that's not the way I'm used to working with people. I'll let you know if there's anything else in the charter that I'm concerned about.
This is a matter at hand, which is the ethics. So it, it's, I think, part of, part of the issue is, is that our charter is silent on, on ethics and, you know, ethics issues. So for example.
Part of, part of the issue is, is that our charter is silent on, on ethics and, you know, ethics issues. So for example, um, in the last council, we had a couple of issues. Like for example, absence issues, and there was nothing that we could do about it as a council. Because there was nothing in our charter that allowed us any, there were no ramifications because of absence issues on certain boards. And so there was nothing we could do about it other than just let, let, you know, these absences just continue. And so, um. You know, so, so this, this is an example of something that might be addressed by that. So the idea, the idea is to fill of, of the ordinance is to fill in the holes. As opposed to, you know, amending the charter and, and going through all that needs to be necessary to remember charter, which is purely the purpose of any ordinance. So.
I thought there was an absence clause in the charter. Some, some, just some things, your city council.
Some have them, some don't.
But it was, we agreed to have Scott. Is there any other discussion on ethics? Ordinance and training. And I mean, and then I was gonna look for the MML to do a ethics training.
Yeah, that, that is a service they provide. I think, um, it would probably be beneficial if we had our ordinance in place before we then got trained on it. Yeah, that's something that I think we could do.
Should we have outside help with? Changing things, changing what? Putting the ordinance in place. I mean, who's?
So that's why we would have Scott address it and bring it back to us for us to, uh, go over, see if there, you know. If there is, there, there is a need for it to be changed, that this thing that, that's somewhere we can start. And then we can. Like what Scott also offered is to have a subcommittee for, but I think a start would be good to have. Something, a document, starting to have like a, a rough draft of what it could be.
And there would be a study session where we could have a discussion about it and. Every study session, first or third Monday. Yes, absolutely.
And since it's a draft, it's going to be on the website. So you can get access, the residents can get access to the draft. And they can come here for public comment and that's where we can get our feedback from them as well too.
And just so, I mean, with, as with any ordinance, there's always a first and a second reading of that ordinance before it becomes effective. So. In addition to the, the study section, especially that council will have. There, there's also still that opportunity when, when it does go on a regular meeting, that the first reading, the public has an opportunity to comment, council has an opportunity to comment if there's changes. From the first reading to the second reading that those can be made prior to the adoption, if that's what the council ultimately chooses to do.
Anything else?
Can we send, send, uh, suggestions of things that we might like to see in it? So what we'll do is first have them do the ordinance or put the draft together. So then when he sends it back, that'll be an opportunity for you to go through it. And you can see what, or we can see what needs to be added to it or what needs to be removed from it.
We'll be working back.
Right.
And then we'll, we as a council. At study sessions crafted into the final order.
Okay. Is there like a boilerplate? Template for it or something or no?
Well, that's the draft that was included in your package is kind of like the, the. A rough draft.
That's what my office had prepared for, for the village of Wollery Lake. Uh, that's probably the starting point of what I would use now. If there are certain things that you see, I mean, by just having reviewed that, if there's certain things in there that you like or don't like. Absolutely let, you know, you can let me know ahead of time before I bring it back. But, uh, yeah, that's. That's kind of, I guess, there is, and again, those other, those other ordinances, uh, city attorney is a pretty good one. I think Lawson has pretty decent ones too. So, but those are, you know, usually the ordinance drafting, that's what, that's how I, I do it. That's all I would do. Turning to it, to look at what other communities have done, what has worked, what hasn't worked, and then kind of craft, uh, an ordinance specific to the needs of the city.
Anything else?
I'm not sure. Do we need to go, um? I, I guess when I was looking at the draft, I didn't think it was too intentional or detailed. You know, pertaining to the cities. I would like to see it a little bit more detailed to, um. You know, how we use electronics and things of that nature. And I guess process and procedure for when. We're using email and things of that nature, because I think that could help us, um, you know. Not make whatever, you know, errors that are arising. And so it's. Written into the ordinance and that's one place you can look to make sure you're adhering to those.
On that topic, I'm glad you brought that up because that. So my recommendation for that, those types of things for policy oriented type things, those should be in the standing rooms. So what I think. Maybe a separate document from this. Because those are subject to change probably more frequently, although again, we haven't amended them since the eighties, but. In other communities, their, their council policies and procedures and their resolution on that change more frequently. So. Rather than codifying under, under municipal order as an ordinance of the city, it's a resolution. So. Again, it just provides for a little bit more flexibility. We have that, that is, I think that should be done in addition to, I do think our, our. Policies and procedures are a bit antiquated, as Coco indicated, and I think that's the. The amount of document that we talked about revising two years ago, and then it just never happened. So, um. That's something else that I think should be a focus of, uh, first quarter of next, you know, next year that we work on getting a, an updated. A comprehensive update for that, that, uh, those.
And those could work in concert, that, you know, violation for example.
Yeah, yeah. We can reference it, not necessarily specifically call out the rule procedure, but we can reference them in an, in an order. But. You know, how do we deal with, or how do you approach, you know, making sure that everyone is on the same page and following all of those. Again, it's more so just a, it's kind of an easier document that. We can look at and see, this is what the expectations are. This is what. I can expect in my city council.
Anything else?
Um, next we'll have the, um, SGRX prescription saving program. Uh-oh.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, name is Eman Ecteunio, and I am the CEO of SGRX. We are a pharmacy benefit manager. So essentially, when you think about healthcare system, we have medical, pharmacy, dental vision. So we have the pharmacy component. Of the healthcare package. And here today with myself is Heather Kotaski, who is our pharmacy network manager. Um, we're here to talk about our SGRX saves program. Essentially, SGRX saves program is a.
Sorry, sorry. Can you speak in the mic?
Thank you.
Better?
Much better.
All right, thank you.
SGRX saves program is a prescription savings program that's tailored to provide pharmacy discount benefits to the underinsured and uninsured. So essentially, you know, in the situation where you have insurance. And you have, you know, high adult people, high copay, and you're looking for a opportunity to supplement your prescription cost, you can use this program. Or if another uninsured completely or actually be shopping for the best or the lowest net cost price for prescriptions, you can also use an option. What we're doing is we're looking at opportunities such as partnerships with the city where we can private label products so that either. Employees, um, city residents, or anyone affiliated with the city can use this card to be able to lower their prescription costs. The program, we have copies here that, I believe we could pass that out. It is a free program that actually has access to over thirty thousand stores nationwide. That includes all the major pharmacy partners, CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Rite Aid, Kroger, Myers. And it's a really simple program. It's free. And all we have to do at this point is have, we will have samples of what the card will look like. Where the patient goes into the store, presents the information, um, and the way it's programmed, you can use your phone number as a unique ID. And as long as the pharmacy puts in the unique information that's assigned to this program, it generates a protocol in the backend, if nothing else. There's no exchange of data, no personal information between the city and us. It's essentially a free program that requires no data exchange or cost or fee for the code. We have an online portal that they can go onto and price information. So. One of the most popular, it's a few popular tools like this, GoodRx, the Single Care, the most folks are familiar with, but essentially. That's the most, best point of reference that I can give. They're going to the portal, put your drug name in, and it tells you. And you can even ask for the closest pharmacy within a five, ten, twenty mile radius. And it'll give you a list of pharmacies in the area to compress and see which pharmacy has the cheapest or the lowest cost. And within, you know, everything is on the side of guarantee. It gives you the highest possible scenario from a pricing standpoint. So you can call the pharmacy, make sure that the claim will go through and just to guarantee that and, you know, hit the pharmacy to pick up the medication. The other thing that we are doing with this program, in addition to having it be a free program, is we're also providing what's called patient assistance program support. One of the most expensive sectors of the pharmaceutical. World are specialty chronic high cost medications. So we have a lot of the drug manufacturers have what they call copia assistance program. So we will, again, with no additional cost, support anyone who calls and we have the city to say, hey. You know, we have a discount card, but we need additional help because that product is very expensive. We have relations with this drug manufacturer. So we'll reach out to them and try to have. The patient optimize any existing copay assistance or copay waiver programs. And again, that's a benefit that comes with, um. The city adopting this program or endorsing the program. Any questions? Yes.
How, how does this work with the city? What's the, what's the benefit to the city? I mean, I know, I know it'd be a benefit to residents, but what's the benefit to the city? You know, sponsoring it or, you know, publicly supporting it.
So initially, you know, again, no, um. You know, cost at all to the city. It's initially a way to be able to help supplement your existing programs. So when you think about individuals that have, or think about the existing coverage you have through the across. Not every drug is covered. So you still have a significant amount of your population that will go out and pick up medications. And pay cash for it. So this helps employees, residents be able to lower the cost of those medications that are not covered.
And then do you, do you, do you do the advertising, marketing to our residents? What, what is?
Hundred percent we own that. So once you decide this is something you want to adopt, we will work together with you, whether it's health fears. Marketing, so we will support a hundred percent of marketing and no cost to you.
All right. So there wouldn't be any additional work that a, an employee in the city would have to do to. Support this besides just, you know, letting people know how to contact. You.
Exactly. Great question. Yes, that's correct.
Supplying the logo. To, uh.
Sewer program.
Only, it's better because it's, it doesn't cost residents that much. Basically, it's the benefit for the resident.
And yes, to, to be able to privately label it, we need you to go over and put it on the.
And you've sent something out to all the residents also that this is an option, um, for them if we adopt it.
Yes, yes. It will work with you to use the most, you know, effective campaign mechanism to get that lived out. Because that's the most important thing, you tell them that access that way. So they can go in on pricing medication. Again, the way it works, again, is free. If it's not going to save you money, you don't use it.
Can you, uh, speak to any surrounding cities that you guys have worked with?
Um, surrounding cities, we previously worked with the city of Roseville. We had, uh, wells. Sterling Heights previously, but so we are a pharmacy benefit manager that works with employer groups, health plans. Government programs, um, that have been around almost twenty years. It's my first, celebrating twenty years this year. And as of twenty twenty, we manage over a hundred million dollars in pharmacy spend. So while we don't have a lot of local, um, references, we have our largest client covers over forty thousand employees. And our smallest client has less than a hundred. We have customers all over the country.
So your specialty is not just municipal.
Exactly. Okay. And, and it's not just, so this is one, the prescription savings program is one segment of our services. We're primarily a pharmacy benefit manager that provides, um, premium services to employee groups and health classes.
Yeah, so it's kind of a win-win in, in that you get brand awareness and our residents get discounts on their drugs by having.
Exactly.
Subscription figure.
Yes.
Have you heard a presentation on this already?
They met with us during.
Any questions for?
Any additional questions?
No.
Um, and I believe that this is coming up on our, uh, in our meeting. So, um, are you all sticking around for the meeting?
Yes.
I'm trying to, um, that's like too much.
So we'll be voting on it tonight?
Yes.
It's the first action item.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that, yeah, okay.
I was concerned, why wasn't it not in the packet?
Right.
This information.
Yes. Okay.
So I didn't know if it was employees, you know, what it was. So. Just to just get information and then have to vote.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Hang out either in, yes, and then there's another room that's all the way, the meeting room is all the way across. Oh, okay. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
But so long update.
I was in my chair last week when, uh. Pam called me and told me about the invoice from that the city has received from Buffalo for this election commission related services. It's, uh. It's twenty thousand, little penny, it's a little bit over twenty eight thousand dollars. I was shocked by this. I reached out to Beth from Buffalo, who is my contact attorney. Through this process and, and. We haven't been able to sit down and go over it yet, but we, she did, she did indicate that this is something that she is willing to work with the city on. But again, I was. I mean, that's, that's like six months of what I've known the city for my services. So, um, very surprised by it. Obviously, my recommendation to Pam was not to issue the check until we get it figured out. You know, there appears that there were a lot of services that were built. For items that we clearly did not include in our scope. Just for example, uh, working with Tal to try to get into the, the QB app, the qualified voter. File which has all the signatures on the petition because that's the, the timeframe in which they were engaged to do the review. The time frame, the question, the validity of any of the signatures on the petitions had already passed. That was not part of the scope of what they were asked to review. So. That, and then they had, you know, four people that looked at everything, which, uh, wasn't really necessary or requested. So. So hopefully we'll have an update, um, on that, but I did. But I did, like I said, it just brought to my attention last week. Pam received an email about it, so we wanted to be aware of it. And again, just something that we're not happy with, but we're going to work on it. Questions or feedback or thoughts on that, be happy to take it to them.
We're sort of, until after the year, back to the best, Buffalo.
Yeah.
My initial correspondence to them, after seeing this invoice, was that one, we never, you know, we authorized a $5,000 expenditure. There was no communication from them that they had utilized, in fact, they didn't even give the city credit for that retainer on their invoice. So, but there was no communication with the city that, you know, we had exceeded that or had used up a majority of that retainer amount. Or we're meeting here, which would be, that would be the customary practice for attorneys. If they're working on a retainer, once they've exhausted the majority of that retainer, they will go back to their clients and request approval. Will ask for more money usually. So I'm very shocked by the way that they handled this. Again, hopefully, we'll have an update soon.
Anyone have any feedback? Agenda item discussion, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the postponement of the sending of the resolution to start the cannabis application process. So I think just based on the brief conversation we all had about it, it seems like there's pretty much enough support that and we feel that it makes, makes sound like I could speak to everybody, but we did have a very brief discussion at the last meeting. And it makes sense, given the importance of the city administrator's role in that application process and the fact that we don't have a city administrator. So as we talked about a little bit earlier, you know, it's about a four to six month process to hire a city administrator. And, you know, when we get to the end of that process, say in six months, we're not just going to flip the switch on and say, hey, let's go with the application process. So, you know, probably going to have to give that new person, you know, two or three months to have to, you know, set up their department, you know, configure their staff, get up to speed and all, what you need to labor and so forth. So realistically, probably on a conservative basis, you're probably talking, you know, seven, eight, nine months before you get to the point where we're able to click that switch back on. And so the concern that I have, I think the only drawback about moving, you know, putting a delay in processes is that it's really going to hamper any economic development that we have in the city. Because, you know, right now, there's just been talking to existing businesses and talking to prospective businesses. You know, there's, there's a lot of inflation and increases on the rental space. You have all the speculation that's going on and leases and so forth. And then from talking to Suzie, you know, it also appears that most of the buildings in the green zone have contingent contracts with campus vendors that basically say, if we get a license, we'll buy your building. And so nothing is going to happen with any of these buildings while we're in the delay process. So my concern is, is that we're going to get to the end of this process. And then, you know, I think there's, you know, we may have a movement to give this information to the voters, so that the voters decide what to do with it. You know, both, you know, her conversations. And so I think what's eventually going to end up happening is that this will end up going to the voters. So, so my concern is, is if we wait until the end of this delay and say, okay, now we want to go put it in front of the voters, we'll miss November. Because there's a long delay period, I think, beginning of August is when everything has to be into the state and so forth. So we'll miss that period, which is going to mean it's going to, which is off to another, another year to the next November, like 2023. So that's going to kill us economically from a development perspective, because now you're going to have almost two years of stagnation. And so what I'd like to propose is that in our next study session, we begin as a council to start talking about what putting, you know, putting this to the voters, what it would look like, you know, what we would specifically be asking. And basically, start the process so that we do it now, so that we don't end up with a two-year delay and really crush us from an economic perspective.
Are you saying to put the, the dispensaries, rather than we have dispensaries to put on the ballot?
Well, I think what we, and we have to, we need Scott's info, but my thought is, is that, because we've got the ordinance in place.
Right.
And ordinance protects us. But if, if we never say, you know, as Scott talked about in our last meeting, we separated the the start application date into a separate resolution. So if that never gets implemented, then the ordinance stays in place and we don't get dispensary. So I think what I'm proposing, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would put the, you know, ask the voters whether or not there should be an application start date. And if they say no, then we just don't implement a start date, ordinance stays in place, which keeps us protected. If they say yes, then we, you know, start to put the switch on, we can start to have a debate about, or is there another way?
So, you know, I'm trying to follow what you're saying. I understand it's hard, you know, blocking any sort of economic development, because no property owners could right, you know, risk not having a potential cannabis customer buy their building. So I, you know, but I would think the bigger question and what the overwhelming discussion, at least from what's from brought to my attention is, is whether the city should have the ordinance in general. Should we have opted in and allowed for cannabis facilities? So, and shouldn't that be a question that had gone to the voters initially? It wasn't primarily because of the timing when the citizen petition was submitted, it had already been timed in, to put it on the ballot, it had already gone past. So what I would recommend is, I agree 100%, I don't think that this, with short staff already, I don't think that moving forward with the application period is a wise idea, simply because there's not enough people to review everything and make sure that it's done timely and accurately. During that delay period, I do think, again, and this is entirely up to the wish in the council, is if they wanted to put the Kansas ordinance, the cannabis business ordinance in front of the voters, that that would be the time to do it. Like you said, if you don't do it, or if you wait until petition is received, a referendum or something of that nature, you know, if it's not timely received, then it doesn't get on the ballot for the following general election. So I think that's a discussion that council could have. And if the voters rescind or pass a referendum, write down a question, then ordinance would come off and the city would opt out. My concerns about, and I have talked about this on a number of occasions previously, that by not having an ordinance on the books that sets the framework, it does potentially subject the city to pro-cannabis groups submitting their own, usually in the form of a charter amendment, submitting their own language to the voters for consideration. To that extent, I will say that if city puts its own ordinance on there, the vote and the residents vote against cannabis businesses, that sends a clear message to cannabis industry that this is not really a community that is going to be well-received for our product. It's often times they will move on to the next community that, you know, may not have a definitive position on. So that, that would be, I think that would probably be my recommendation. But again, it's something that would have to come from council.
Yeah, so I'd like, if we could discuss it further in January, that'd be great.
We can hold a special election, we don't have to wait for November election.
Right, but I think, again, my thought, and I don't know how others feel, I personally would like it to be in the November election, because we'll get the best response from the city. I mean, you know, people
Something like this, you would have a churn out.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, if you've got a big election, you know, we're voting for senators and representatives, you know, that's going to bring people, it's going to help to bring people out. And so we'll get the most accurate, I guess.
Right, but if you're concerned about dragging things out, we can hold a special election.
Right, and there's a cost to that though, too.
Well, yeah.
Well, I think that that's a great idea. I think that we should get the, I think that stuff is a great idea, put it on the ballot at this point. And, yeah. So what do we have to do to, like, get that ball rolling? If that, you know, was all everybody wants?
Well, yeah, let's get to the resolution on Snyder, or questions about that. And then we can address what the next step is. But I think it simply would be putting that ballot question on the, putting that question of the ordinance on the ballot for consideration.
Okay. Council and mayor comments, council and mayor comments, which I don't have any at this time. Any council comments?
Nice question. Just wanted to know, had several people reach out and say they aren't able to get ahold of anybody at the city and no one's called them back. I just don't, I don't know what our process is for incoming calls. I know usually you call and you get the message, is that standard? Does anyone ever just directly answer their phone? What does it look like? It's like, you know, some people know.
If they're calling the front desk, if that person is helping somebody at the desk, that phone will, they have to go to the voicemail, meaning they receive a message. They won't return it back, but we have told the residents before that we have a 24-hour window period to turn our calls. The front desk person has been on the opposite side. Can we have the mic?
Yeah.
Our front counter person has been on the office the last four days. So we have had somebody at that front desk. I have had people that have, they call me and I answer my phone when they call me. They do leave messages, I do get back with them within the 24 hours. I know front counter person does return her calls, but most of the time, we pick them up first thing in the morning, we get our calls. And then we try to return first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Before we start getting busy for the day, because sometimes we can't. And you will have same people, they will call three or four times right in a row. Oh. And, because I've been, where I've had people in my office and I look at my phone and it's the same people calling three or four times right in a row, and they will not leave the message, which, I mean, if I can't pick it up because I have somebody in my office, then
Yeah, for sure. Sometimes, sometimes you do get cut off, though I've had that happen to me, where you're trying to reach someone and you just get cut off and you can't leave a message. So, you know, and I don't know, that might not be an issue, but it did, did happen to me.
Okay.
I mean, I called back later, whatever, but, you know.
I don't know what extension that might have been, so we could have to look at the extension, if that was an extension problem or something.
No, it was the main number.
Main number.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions on that?
I have something, I have a few things, one of them is kind of related to that, so.
Oh, for that, or are you finished with your questions, council?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so probably something to wait for, for new city administrators, but it doesn't mean we can't start doing that work if you, you know, when you guys have some free time. But one of the things that might be worth looking into is, you know, which will alleviate some of the customer service issues, is getting some type of customer service tracking software. You know, like when you call Comcast, for example, you know, they're logging, you know, the call and then it allows us to make sure that there, you know, there's a follow-through resolution. So we were doing this, like in the first two years I was on council, you know, we had been doing it via spreadsheet. And then that just kind of fell through the cracks. But I think that's a great way of, of being able to ensure, I mean, it does add, it would add time to people's jobs, because they would have to log some of these things in, but that's could be another issue.
Well, that kind of went away when they brought out N C Clip Fix. Because see, Cook Fix was supposed to take care of the majority of the calls, where the problems of the streets, the branches, the code enforcement stuff. And that's, and if you saw the sheet, the spreadsheet we did, that was a lot of problems.
Yeah, but I think
For the complaints that come.
It would be worth exploring to see, you know, what the cost of that software is and any type of process that we would have to put around it. Because that, that's something that would really allow us to, you know, make sure that we're following up. Plus, you know, as you guys know, a lot of times, you know, residents are very passionate and you're not getting the full story sometimes. And so it allows you to, you know, have all of the history on what an issue is. Everything is documented and so we can verify things and stuff.
Yeah, that was during the campaign, that was a big issue. People just said, I can't reach anybody, nobody gets back with me, nobody follows up. I mean, you know, there's always going to be people that say, happens all the time or whatever. But there was a large number of people that had that issue. So, you know, some way to address it.
I mean, you can look at software and different things.
And C Cook Fix leads right into one of the other things I can't hear for a couple of hours. Can we get in our packet, start getting a report on, you know, how many incidents are open, how many are closed? You know, I know, I know there have been times where Cheryl has kind of included what I've requested in a spreadsheet that shows, you know, what's going on within C Cook Fix. I don't know if it's possible to get something as detailed as what like the police, that may be over, too much overkill. But what the police do with their report where, you know, Cantor reported, you know, Rusty Culvert's signed that so-and-so was completed on such and such a day, replaced Culvert, you know, something like that.
We can look into see what kind of reports we can get from him.
We've been weekly C Cook Fix before.
We were, and then it stopped.
And they were, they were, they were very basic, you know. But it'd be like, be good to know what's going on and, you know, a little bit more deal on what's going on there. Yeah, I guess the only other question that I had was, we had talked about Ronnie was going to be looking for some of the ditch issues. We were going to have trained Ronnie and have him sent out to look at some of the, you know, low-hanging fruit, you know, root in the ditch. You know, he called it that kind of thing to try to help the dip system along. And I'm just curious if we've started doing that or that's
I didn't think about all of that at that point, but he is on vacation for the next two weeks. He won't be there personally.
Yeah, I think there's a few more.
Evaluating all the tissues that may be impacted with the paving of roads. So I can certainly reach out to, to them and see if they've found any sort of outlying ditch and culvert issues that necessarily be handled as part of the paving project.
Right, but the discussion that we had on that, I don't know, a few months ago, was that this, this was really to target the 19 miles that are outside of the seven miles that are getting, getting assessed. Because we know those, we know those seven miles are going to be looked at by the engineers, but that leaves 19 miles where we're not going to be touching up. But in some instances, actually, a lot of instances, there's some really low-hanging fruit that can be done. Very simple things that, you know, having a resident, you know, take care of a route that's in the ditch, for example, that's blocking it for the whole street, so it affects.
Anything else? Any comments?
No.
Councilwoman Kness, any comments? Hey, is there any public comments? Okay, well then, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I don't know, no, to adjourn, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, we're adjourned.